One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lentz.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell. Mayor Davis.
Here.
Here.
And Councilmember Cunningham is absent.
City Attorney, report out from closed session, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council met in closed session to discuss pending litigation involving the county and other cities all pursuing PCB remedies. Council was to provide an update, and the city council took it on board. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Now we have adoption of the agenda. I'd actually like to make one change. I would like to move item H before item G.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Oral communications number one. I have a slip from Tom Heitz. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I wasn't able to attend your last meeting, so I came tonight to apologize for my behavior at the other meeting two meetings ago. It was rude and disrespectful, and I have no excuses. It was just bad. I would also like to say, and this involves no blame at all. I'm not implying any blame at this, none whatsoever. I simply see it as a misalignment of information. I think had the mayor said at the beginning of the meeting what was said at the end of the meeting, I would not have said a thing. In fact, had the article in the Luminary, I think, or perhaps the Star, came out after that meeting, if had that had that come out before the meeting, I would not have even shown up. So, um, my apologies. Thank you for allowing me to apologize.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Is there anyone else wishing... Okay. Let's restart this timer here.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I got a call this week from Dave Peters because he saw the signs about no horses allowed on the new trail, and I advised him to call City Hall and discuss it. And I'm hoping that going forward, we can work out some kind of arrangement where they can use part of the trail, or there's a side trail that they can use to access the mountain that won't impact the new paving. So I told him to seek a solution with you, and I hope that you guys will be open-minded about a solution to that, because it is the only access they really have to take horses up on the mountain, which is allowed allowed to take courses on the mountain and has been a long, long use of coming through the railroad tunnel and then taking the trail far away. So I understand it's going to be an issue, but hopefully you guys will be able to come to a resolution that satisfies everybody. So, thank you. I just wanted to bring that to your attention so you could be thinking in advance about how to accommodate all uses for that public right of way. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak at oral communications number one? I see a hand raised from Roland.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity and for last night's wonderful state of the city presentation. I would like to circle back to the November 2nd meet, closed session, which is two weeks ago, for the parcel on South Hill Drive. And the ensuing public comment that took place during the regular city council meeting. Specifically, I would like to offer a couple of hopefully helpful recommendations on how we could improve transparency and community engagement on these matters. My first comment is that terms and conditions are clearly items for discussion behind closed doors. But it would be, it would help transparency if staff could identify the parcels more clearly by assessing parcel number known as APNs, as well as potentially highlighting the specific parcel on a parcel map attached to the agenda instead of just lot 1, block 1, track 862, which does not necessarily make a lot of sense to the average member of the public. The last one I'd like to make is that somehow I think that members of the committee need to be made aware that the best time to address council on a closed session item is at the onset of the closed session as agendized on every closed session agenda, not necessary during the following open session during general public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay.
Yeah, I feel I agree with what Roland said, but I do know what parcel that is because it's come up before, and in the past, we decided not to sell it because it is a public property, and it was deeded to the people of Brisbane for, you know, rails to trails. And I think that it is a very valuable piece of property and that we should not sell it because it gives us, although not necessarily completely legal access, it does give us access to the mountain and to be able to bring in fire equipment if we need to. And I really think that we should work on getting an easement with the property owner, Hensley, or whoever owns that property, to be able to access the mountain and that section. So I am absolutely adamantly opposed to the city selling yet another piece of public property that shouldn't have been sold. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at oral communications number one? Okay. Moving on to consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve items B through F?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. We will now move on to item H, which is consider introduction of the Dark Sky Ordinance, waving first reading, adding Chapter 15.88 Outdoor Lighting Standards to the Brisbane Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Adrienne Etherington, Sustainability Manager. We're going to start this topic with a presentation from our expert consultant, joining us via Zoom. Before I move into the details of this ordinance, please allow me to introduce John Barrentine. John is an astronomer, historian, author, science communicator, and founder of Dark Sky Consulting LLC. He earned a PhD in astronomy from the University of Texas. He is a member of the American Astronomical Society and the International Astronomical Union, and is a fellow of the Royal Astronomical Society. John formerly served as the International Dark Sky Places Program Manager, Director of Public Policy, and Director of Conservation for the International Dark Sky Association, and has an impressive list of publications on dark sky issues. John, please take it away.
Thank you very much for that, Adrienne. I will share my screen here and start my presentation. Okay. Madam Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the council, in the next few minutes, I will summarize for you some of the motivations and approaches that we've been taking and developing the current draft of the updated outdoor lighting ordinance for Brisbane. In the following slides, I will briefly introduce a topic and give you a headline that conveys the important information associated with that topic. First, I will run through some of the concerns having to do with light pollution that motivate our actions, and then touch on some of the elements of the ordinance that are meant to address those concerns. There are a number of challenges associated with light pollution. Chief among them is its impact on the nighttime environment. We now know that light pollution has significant negative effects on ecosystems, and they range from harm to individual organisms all the way up to entire biological communities. This is a particular concern in Brisbane because of its coastal setting and also its location along the Pacific Flyway for migratory birds. While the subject of how light at night interacts with human health and well-being is still not well-understood, we have evidence sufficient to suggest that there is a connection and that we should try to lower our exposure to artificial light at night as much as possible. In the realm of outdoor lighting, exposure can be reduced by eliminating light trespass and decreasing wasted light in general. Clearly, the use of outdoor lighting is necessary in order to preserve public safety. When properly applied, we know that lighting our streets saves lives. But at low speeds and in areas where traffic volumes are low, continuous overhead lighting is not particularly effective. A more deliberate approach to providing street lighting can improve traffic safety and limit its impact of lighting on the nighttime environment. The electricity consumption associated with outdoor lighting is also a concern. The way we currently use outdoor lighting is not particularly efficient with respect to our stated goals, and consequently, much of that light is considered wasted. This has important consequences for our energy security and for climate change. Limiting light pollution can therefore have a beneficial effect on both the local and the global environment. While there is a popular belief that brighter outdoor lighting tends to decrease the incidence of crime, the evidence that we have does not bear this out. Although lighting can improve feelings of safety, when poorly designed and installed, it can actually undermine nighttime safety. Real safety at night can be enhanced by improving visibility through better targeting light to users' security needs and employing adaptive strategies such as the use of motion sensors. Improving outdoor lighting to address these concerns involves changes that are simple, affordable, and effective. Mindful application of just these few ideas shown here saves energy, reduces light pollution, and improves outdoor visibility at night. Properly shielding lighting such that its output is aimed only at target surfaces is the single best approach we know of to limit the effects that wasted light otherwise has on neighboring spaces and on the night sky. Given what we know about the environmental harms associated with sources of light rich in blue colors, the use of warmer sources with color temperatures at or below 3,000 Kelvin is a good practice for limiting impacts to wildlife, to people, and to the night sky. Currently, we tend to use much more light for many outdoor lighting applications than is considered safe and effective according to international standards. Limiting the total amount of light that can be installed on a property provides sufficient task illumination while preventing waste, reducing glare, and limiting light trespass. And lastly, much of our outdoor lighting is operated during times of the night when people simply aren't around to use it. Lighting curfews, combined with active controls such as timers and dimmers, reduce the amount of light used during the overnight hours to save both money and electricity. And with that, I thank you for your attention, and I will hand it back to Adrienne.
Thank you, John. So now I'm going to walk through some key elements of the ordinance at a high level, and then we can dive in on any specific questions. You can go ahead and to the next slide. First, I'll start with what's not covered or only partially covered in the ordinance. On the not-covered side, we have indoor lighting, temporary lighting such as emergency or construction lighting, lighting for fire pits or other short-term uses, things that you wouldn't need to get a permit from the city for, safety requirements like fire alarms, fire alarm notification devices, or building address lighting, lighting regulated by a higher authority, so things like schools, which are regulated by the Division of the State Architect, and low-intensity landscape lighting that is pointed downward, such as solar pathway lights. On the partially covered side are your festive lights. Brisbane stars are only subject to curfew, and seasonal and holiday lighting is also subject to curfew and limited to October 1st through February 15th. Next slide, please. One of the key principles, as John discussed, is keep your light to yourself. To that end, there are two main requirements. First, all outdoor lighting must be fully shielded. We have some limited exemptions for low-impact lighting, like low-lumen string lighting when they're used in occupied decks and patios, or flag lighting, which only needs to be partially shielded. And then light trespass is prohibited. So this is really to say that the light source itself, the light bulb, should be not visible, should not be visible from off-site your property unless it is one of those exempted lighting types. Next slide, please. Again, as John discussed, there's a time and a place for lighting. The ordinance includes a curfew of 10:00 PM or close of business, if that's later, for commercial facilities. Commercial facilities must employ automated control systems such as photo cells, motion sensors, or timers to ensure the lights don't remain on after curfew. Some lights are exempt from curfew, motion sensor lighting that turns off less than 10 minutes after it's activated, lighting at building entrances, in residential areas, the parking areas and driveways. And on the commercial side, your entire parking lot can't be lit up all night, but your entrance or egress points can be. As far as additional location limitations for all properties, any lighting that's around the property line should be controlled by a motion sensor that's off after 10 minutes or less. And in residential areas, really just saying your lighting should be in the habitable areas where people are, near buildings, pools, driveways, and walkways. Next slide, please. As far as color intensity, we know from John that that blue light has bigger impacts on health and the environment, so we're proposing the color temperature of 3,000 Kelvin or less. On the intensity or brightness, this is designated by zoning district, where your open space zones are a lower intensity, and your commercial zones have higher lighting levels to provide a safe environment for those more intense uses. These thresholds were based on the International Dark Sky Association's Model Lighting Ordinance with adjustments recommended by John. The standards are based on square footage of hardscape for most use types, so that's your walkways and parking lots and such, whereas the residential uses, we've regulated by developed lot area. And these thresholds will primarily come into play for new buildings. Next slide, please. Lastly, I'll just touch a little bit on compliance and enforcement. Basically, all new or replaced ordinance light, new or replaced outdoor lighting after the ordinance's effective date shall comply. We do have a deviation process incorporated for those unique circumstances where it's infeasible to meet every letter of the law and would require those facilities to comply to the extent possible. As with most things in Brisbane, enforcement would be complaint-based and subject to the city's regular administrative citation process. As far as getting the existing lighting to come into compliance, we've separated that into a few different buckets. The first for all properties is to do easy fixes within a year, things that should be no or low cost, like redirecting lighting, dimming lighting, putting your motion sensor timer down to less than 10 minutes if you have those things equipped, or replacing the bulbs if they are replaceable. More extensive changes like fixture replacements, you'll have more time for. That'll be five years for non-residential and 10 years for residential zones. We've also proposed to give ourselves a little more time, 15 years, for streetlights and city facilities. And that's because our estimate of changes that we would need to make to those are looking to cost somewhere in the range of $1 million. So we do want to have some time to spread that cost out. That's not to say that we're not going to replace any lighting for 15 years, but we would bring forward a program to council with the next budget to phase those costs in and prioritize areas to address first. For others that might also have financial or other hardships, we do have an extension process available as well. Next slide. Before we turn to questions, I want to give a big thank you again to John Barrentine of Dark Sky Consulting for his advice in this process and for help tonight answering any technical questions that may come up. I also want to thank Senior Planner Julia Ayers, and may ask for her to jump in on any planning-related questions. And last but not least, I want to acknowledge the work of the Open Space and Ecology Committee's Dark Sky Subcommittee that has worked diligently on this for a very, very long time. And all three of those members are here tonight, Barbara Ebel, Michelle Salmon, and Erin Becker. Thank you.
Excellent. I would also love to commend our Open Space and Ecology Committee. I know this has been a long road, and finally, we're here. So I appreciate you sticking with it for the many, many hours and probably lots of hair pulling that you had to go through. I'd also love to commend our community for filling out the survey. I went through a lot of the responses that were included in the staff report, and people were so thoughtful with their suggestions and their comments. And, you know, we are able to make, I think, better decisions when the community weighs in. So really wanted to just acknowledge all of those entities now. I have a few questions. Why February 15th for seasonal lighting? That just seems like such a random day.
I will be honest and say that I am not sure. That is something I think we got originally from the Model Lighting Ordinance.
Is it for Valentine's Day? Because I don't really see that being... Well, you can approach.
So when I started working on the first draft of this many, many years ago, one of the things I did was look at sort of the migration period. And the migration period, I think, peaks in November, but continues on through January into February. So we sort of decided on the 15th to capture Valentine's Day, but really, it came out of the migration.
Because I feel like if someone's decorating for Valentine's Day, they're not having it down by February 15th.
No, no. If it was really about Valentine's Day, I think we could, you know, maybe push it to February 21st or something. But it came out of the migration period.
My suggestion that I would like to see would be September 15th. Because, I mean, it gets dark later anyway, so less time things would be lit. But I would say September 15th to January 31st, because there are some people, me being one of them, that decorates ridiculously early for Halloween. So I think that, and I start seeing people putting things out for Halloween a little bit earlier. So to me, I would say that even for all the stragglers who are getting down their Christmas stuff, it's down, I mean, you got to have it down by January 31st, in my opinion. So it's not any more time necessarily. It's just shifting the window of time for holiday lighting. To me, that makes sense. But that's a discussion for the council. For the flagpole lighting, we received comments about that, and I want to inquire, if you have a flagpole, right? There's a lot of things you have to commit to if you have a flagpole. You have to put it half-mast when it's appropriate. You have to follow all these things. So is lighting it at night one of the requirements if you have a flagpole? Because there was a lot of comments in the, there was a lot of comments in the survey saying like, just don't even have the flagpoles, the flags lit at all. So I want to clarify that.
I believe if you have a flagpole and you have a flag up on that flagpole, a US flag up on that flagpole, it is supposed to be lit.
That's what I thought. Okay, I think that's important for the public to know. Because I saw a lot of comments about like, just don't even have flags lit, and I don't think you can do that. So, and then I, you in your slide mentioned this, and so did comments in the survey, but like, I am struggling to find it here except for maybe page... Okay, there's so many page numbers, but it's under citywide requirements, which is page 163 of our packet, page 5 of 8 or 9 of 35. It's like so many page numbers on here. But under C, item 2, residential sites, outdoor lighting shall be used within 50 feet of residentially habitable buildings or swimming pools, driveways, and walkways. I am trying to find where in here it mentions like by doorways. And I don't know if that's ingress and egress.
You said it in your slide. Yes, and let me find, it is in the table, which is subsection 50, lighting levels by zoning district. It's actually in the sub, the last line of the table, basically. So that's going to be on page four of 8 of the actual ordinance text and the bottom of the table, where we call out what the exemptions to the curfew are. So that's going to be at building entrances regardless of property type.
So it's not subject to the curfew, but it is subject to shielding and everything else, lumens, all of that stuff?
Correct.
Okay. I just felt like that was a little bit unclear. I don't know if it's just the way that I'm reading it, but anyhow, that just...
It is a little bit buried, to be fair.
Because people, like, some of the comments were like, those are the, those are the lights that are the most obnoxious. So I think it should be very clear that like, those lights, while they're not subject to a curfew, maybe we should call them out, like that they, you know, I think those are, those are big offenders. And for me personally, I have neighbors that have, in many different places, right, that have very, very strong lights in their driveway and at the entrance. And so, you know, that should be, I think, a little bit more clear. Yes.
Yeah, no, I think I had this exact same conversation once because I was trying to do a fine, Ctrl+F on the thing, because I was trying to look up that very thing, and the Ctrl+F doesn't hit the table. You can't search a table. So I was, I was thinking, maybe we should put that also in text. Like in the, in the, in the ordinance itself, so that if somebody is trying to find a specific reference, it's searchable.
I think those are the lights that people are going to be most, those, they're going to have to address the most on their property. And so I think it needs to be a little bit more clear what we're expecting from those lights specifically. Those are all of my questions, and I had a question about enforcement, but you mentioned that it's going to be complaint-based. Also, several people commented about cost. So just to clarify for the public, when this goes into effect with the 2023 date, it's really just things that like, your lighting is already equipped to do. So positioning, if you have a light that can be positioned downward, if you have a light that can be dimmed, if you have something that can be on a motion sensor, or if you have a way to replace bulbs that are in compliance. And a lot of people were commenting how it's a hardship to change their fixtures entirely. You have 10 years to do that.
That's correct.
And then if you still need more time, even if like bulbs are out of your budget, then you can apply to have like a one-year extension, correct?
Correct.
I think that's important for the public to know, because there was a lot of comments about affordability.
Yes.
Theoretically, you may have a light that's going to go out in the next 10 years, so. Okay, does anyone else have questions? Terry?
I really don't have any questions. I'll save mine for discussion.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Mackin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to Open Space, three of the members here. I know you worked your hearts out on this. I know this was really long. I truly appreciate your tenacity. And the same with staff. Adrienne, Karen Kinser, I think you were part of it, Public Works, Julia Ayers, the hours behind the scenes, honestly, I truly appreciate that. The public will never know how many hours you've put into this, but they need to know that. So I do have a couple clarification questions. And one, I'll dovetail off what Madam Mayor brought up about lighting at building entrances. When I first read the curfew exemptions, and the first item said activated by motion sensor extinguishing 10 minutes after activation... and the first item said activated by motion sensor extinguishing 10 minutes after activation, I wasn't sure if that also applied to lighting at building entrances. I think that needs to be clarified, because the first time I read it, I went, oh, they can have the lighting after curfew, but it has to be on a motion sensor. So I don't know if that's what you meant, or if I think you're saying they're distinctly separate.
Correct, two separate things. So if you have lighting that is controlled by a motion sensor at any place on your property, if it is controlled by a motion sensor and goes off after 10 minutes, there is no curfew requirement for that.
Okay.
And the building entrances.
Okay, and I would just bring up, echoing what our mayor mentioned, there are a lot of residences at building entrances where the residence, the entrance is at the second floor. And so that light becomes a broadcast light, even downward facing, because that's just the way light goes. Why can't those be on sensors?
I don't think there's anything to say they could not. It's just we would not require at this point. Uh, we would not require them. Certainly, uh, we would encourage folks to put whatever lighting they can on motion sensors. I think that's a great strategy as far as limiting light pollution and glare and other obtrusive impacts and, you know, still addressing safety and crime concerns.
Well, because, right, it gives you the best of both worlds.
Exactly.
Rather than a light just being on all night on someone's porch.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um, on page 2 of 35, also known as 156, I wondered if you could help me out with defining a little bit of what low intensity landscape lighting consists of. And I think of that in many ways. Some people have what they used to have little solar lights. And then there's what they call wall washers, which is upward-facing light that illuminates the side of homes or buildings. And that's usually upward-facing. So what are we referencing as low-intensity landscape lighting? And could we perhaps define that better? So it's really clear to anyone trying to comply with the ordinance.
Sure, I'm going to try to take a stab at this, but I might ask John to, uh, jump in. Um, so I don't think this was as clear or as specific in the staff report as it is in the ordinance language. So I'm going to just double-checking here the actual ordinance language. The low-intensity landscape lighting that is exempted from the ordinance is specifically downward-facing low-intensity landscape lighting. So really, we are talking about those solar pathway lights and other types of landscape lighting. Generally, it's low to the ground, um, it's dim, it's often solar-powered these days, so it's not actually plugged into a, you know, electrical outlet or anything of that nature. And then we have a lumen output limit of 300 lumens per fixture. Um, and if it's dynamic lighting, which would be things that change color or intensity, like twinkle lights or anything like that, that has an even lower threshold of 100 lumens per fixture. Um, John, anything you would add to that description?
No, that's pretty consistent with my understanding. And, uh, yes, we draw a distinction with wall washers, uh, which would still be subject to the other requirements for shielding and total lumens and that sort of thing.
And then, um, another clarification, if I could, referencing page 8 of 35. It also says 4 of 8, but on our staff report, it's 162. So this is the chart that says lighting levels by zoning district. And I would just call to anyone's attention, I went through all the different zones. And Adrian, I'm aware of this, but if you could please clarify for anyone listening or in the audience, the Baylands, Zone C1, are not included on the chart, and I know you can tell us why.
I might actually ask Julia to answer this question.
Uh, sure, I can try to help. Um, so any zoning districts that aren't specifically named in that table, including the C1 district, um, the standards would be determined at the time of an application being submitted um, or the closest applicable district as determined by the director. In the specific case of the Baylands zoning district, we know we have a specific plan, um, under consideration at this time. Um, so we didn't want to prescribe any specific standards and anticipated it would be handled via that existing process.
And I brought it up because people will talk about all the light on Tunnel Avenue. However, I do believe you have HC zoning, which is Beatty, and that is an area that has some rather hefty illumination. One other thing from the same chart, um, your footnote number 2 at the bottom of that chart includes illuminated signage. Illuminated signage can be read also two ways. It could be where there's a stationary sign with upward-pointing lights, either 45 degrees or straight up to the sky. Or it could be internally illuminated. Which one are we talking about?
I believe that is meant to refer to either or both of those lighting types. Julia, if you want to...
Yeah, that's how I read it now, how I remember crafting it. I think, and again, that's specific to curfews. So we just wanted to make it clear that illuminated business signage, I mean, we could maybe clean up if we want to be specific for business signage. Of course, address signage is subject to its own, um, regulations and isn't controlled by curfew.
So could we perhaps consider putting something a little bit more specific about signage illuminated from the outside? That that lighting cannot be pointed skyward, that it needs to be pointed at least at a 45-degree angle?
I would, well, without conferring, we're not sitting next to each other, I would imagine that the requirements to have any lighting be downlit would similarly apply to signage.
Downward lit would be great, but, you know, sometimes they'll use spots from below.
Yeah, my understanding would be that would generally be subjected to the shielding requirements. And so, um, lighting that would be upward-facing in that manner would not be consistent with the ordinance. I see John nodding his head as well.
Okay, and the last thing, and I'm not looking for a long explanation. Mr. Barantin, I'm so pleased that you're here tonight. And something that I think is part of the discussion that's relevant to this, could you please just give us a short treatise on why lighting is so bright now? And why this is suddenly becoming a problem? We ventured into LED lights, and everyone welcomed that after fluorescents and, you know, referred to as CFLs. And so we have all of this low-energy light, and why is it a problem now?
Uh, that, Councilmember Mackin, that's a great question that I'm glad that you brought up. And to give you a reasonably short answer to that question, ironically, it is LED that has encouraged that because the cost of operating it, once you own it, is relatively low. And that's due to the high energy efficiency, of course. So there is, I believe, a perception that is increasingly common that light is inexpensive, it is plentiful. Most people believe there's no downside to its use. Uh, but we have some information from satellite data that was published a few years ago suggesting that, in fact, the expected environmental benefits associated with LED having to do with the high energy efficiency may have been completely wiped out by the tendency of people to put light in places that it did not exist previously or to increase the amount of light in existing installations, so that in the end, we are actually using at least as much, if not more, electricity now than we did before LEDs were introduced. Uh, something that economists refer to as a rebound effect or elastic demand. And I think that's the reason that things are getting brighter everywhere.
And in terms of brightness, and not everyone understands lumens, compared to what we had three, four decades ago, how much brighter overall is outdoor lighting now? Is it twice as bright? Is it more than that? Just to give everyone an idea.
I don't know that I can quote you a number that is representative in general. Um, I know that oftentimes, when lighting is converted from older technologies to LED, so think about places that we were already lighting in the past, and we move them over to LED for the energy savings, oftentimes, the intensity of that light will be increased in the transition again because of a sense that, well, you're saving money now, so you can afford to put slightly brighter lights up. Um, I think people like bright light in some cases because it gives them a stronger feeling of safety. Or there's a belief, as I mentioned in my presentation, that it is something that discourages the perpetration of crime. Uh, and that it's a gradual process. It's not something that happened immediately. Uh, but it's kind of a ratcheting effect where if it increases gradually enough, you don't notice it so much until one day you stand back and take stock and think, wow, you know, the world is, just seems like these lights are so much brighter than they were before. Uh, I don't know that I can give you a number that represents by how much that is, but I can tell you that in the last decade or so, that on average in the United States, that we were seemingly using about 2% per year more light, uh, each year throughout the decade. So that kind of gives you what a sense of the overall, uh, average in that direction.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lenz?
Thank you. So, um, Adrian, you know, just looking at the, um, you know, at the staff report and looking at the demographics of the survey. So it looks like we had 178 households, if you add up all the different households, but only five commercial properties. And then when you look at the complaints, right, the suggestions of making things better, a lot is focused on commercial. So, um, of the commercial properties, were those, you know, like, property owners or companies that are in individual or at individual properties?
As far as the survey results, it was an anonymous survey. So unfortunately, I can't say anymore specifically what, you know, who exactly it was from those businesses, folks who represented themselves or felt they represented businesses.
Okay, because, you know, in the past, you know, we've had folks from The Ridge, you know, complain about the light pollution. And, um, you know, for them, you know, it's, sometimes it's a real big hassle, you know, and they're trying to sleep, and some light is just going into their, um, you know, into their bedroom. Um, you know, you talk about the enforcement, but, you know, to assess whether someone's in compliance or not is going to be at night. So how do you go about having someone to go out and assess whether someone is in compliance or not?
Excuse me. Um, I think that's probably going to, uh, require us relying, to some extent, on our police department and having police department and code enforcement working together. Um, I'm not sure if anyone from those departments would like to speak to this. Um, we did consult with them. Um, it is certainly, uh, something to consider, and, uh, it may be a place where we need to consider adding resources in the future.
Got it.
We could definitely address those complaints. Um, obviously, lighting conditions are going to change. So if we weren't able to get to it right away, we could get to it soon enough. But we could definitely address those complaints with our code enforcement adjusting schedule.
Okay, great. And then, you know, so the large star that's at the end of Hall, um, you know, some people will really like it, and some people don't. So, um, you know, based upon the ordinance, would that person have to dismantle their star?
No, they would simply need to turn it off at curfew time.
Turn it off at curfew time?
Yep.
Okay, just like everybody else?
Yep.
So size isn't so much an issue? If you're lighting your star during the, that time period that you have here, they can do it just like anybody else, but after a certain time, you have to turn it off?
Yes, as currently written, that is what the ordinance would require.
Okay, all right. Um, and then, yeah, I just want to thank, you know, OSEC and staff for the work that you've done. You know, I had an opportunity to go to a couple of, I don't know the exact designation of the locations. I know in the U.S., there are certain places that are night sky designated. And it was at Arches and Great Basin National Parks. And I tell you, you know, the amount of stars was amazing. So then, you know, coming back to Brisbane, you know, I'm looking for those particular stars. And, yeah, we probably won't be able to see them the Milky Way. But, you know, I'm excited about, you know, the potential, at least seeing some additional stars in the sky because it is a connection that we do have, so, thanks.
Okay, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? I have some slips. Barbara Ebel. Oh, and then Oral Communications Number 2, okay.
Um, I just wanted to say, I kind of, when I was talking about the migrations, I kind of botched it. And I think I kind of said the opposite of what I meant.
Oh.
Um, so we cut off in February because the migration starts in, like, March. So we could probably push that to the end of the February without too much of a problem. Um, we went back and forth a lot on the Halloween issue, um, because I personally am a September decorator. But the migration, the fall migration really is August through December. So we're already kind of pushing, um, really pushing those lights into the time of year that we want it dark for the migration. So whatever the council feels best, I'm sure we can live with. Or whatever the public feels best, I'm sure we can live with. But that was the reason we were sort of like, those were the kind of the reasons for those dates. Um, I wanted to ask our consultant, John Barantin, if he would put up that slide again that was safety and security. Because when you had it up, your little window was kind of covering the corner of the slide. And I think that's a very important slide for everybody to see and really understand. Yeah, so that's a, that, on what's on my, right here on the screen, um, there's the same images there, both above and below in those two frames. And on the top frame, for the public, you cannot see the person who is standing in the gate. But when you shield that light and your eye is able to adjust, then you can see that there's a person there. And so that's a big part of, um, why these ordinances actually increase public safety because by decreasing glare, your eye functions better. And you can actually see threats more clearly. Um, so it's like, it's not just about the birds and the bees, although it is about the birds and bees. This is also, if we do this right, there's a lot of evidence that says this actually makes, increases public safety. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
First of all, I really would like to thank Barbara, who's worked on this the longest, and Erin, who's worked on this really hard, and Adrian. And also, let's not forget Rachel. She really was a great contributor, um, to helping craft this ordinance and put it all together. This, having a dark skies ordinance is why I agreed to be on Open Space and Ecology 12 years ago. I can't believe this is finally happening. Um, and when you talked about Crocker Industrial Park and businesses, that was what actually made me really want a dark skies ordinance a long time ago, maybe 20 years ago. You'd drive into Brisbane, and Crocker Industrial, you know, the valley would look like Close Encounters of the Third Kind with this big plume of light coming up from it that illuminated everything around it. It was just horrible, and it's only gotten worse since then. So I think that one of the reasons so much focus is on the businesses is because they are gross light preluders, and they don't have to sleep here. And they don't have to look at the dark skies here. Um, there's a couple of things I would like, uh, you know, us to remember. There is no perfect ordinance. Even the, you know, pick-up-after-your-pet-waste ordinance isn't perfect and isn't appreciated by everyone. But I think overall, this will make the quality of life in Brisbane a lot better. And, um, as far as, you know, enforcement or, you know, having the police come and look at light trespass... at light trespass, I mean, a photograph clearly shows light trespass and clearly shows, you know, overlighting a situation, and so do videos, especially with today's sophisticated photography, that you can, you can, you can demonstrate that there is a problem in certain areas. So I really hope that we pass this. I think there's some tweaks that should be made that were mentioned, especially, I think that we could go down to 2,700 Kelvin instead of 3,000 and be a little bit better and, and just, you know, really tighten it up some. I wish it was even stronger than what it is. The last time we had a power outage at night, I sat out there outside for like three hours because it was so amazing to see the night sky over Brisbane because there was no illumination from any of the lights in the area. It was, it was just amazing because the stars are still there even without, without us being able to see them. So thank you for considering this and thank you for hopefully enacting it.
I have a hand raised from Roland.
Hello again, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity. So obviously, speaking to you as a future resident of uptown Brisbane, and I personally look forward to even better vistas of the Bay, the Bay Bridge and downtown San Francisco at night. The only concern I have is about street lighting, especially in areas, you know, where the pavement is uneven, because my personal preference is to walk at night rather than during the day. And finally, with regards to enforcement, I think the best approach is probably non-invasive detection technology, potentially including automated issuance of notices of non-compliance. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Go ahead.
Thank you, Council. This is a first for me. So I have heard lots of arguments against dark skies ordinances, and I would like to say something about one of them today, which is that San Francisco is our neighbor. And the little amount of good that we do here, I've heard, is not going to make a difference at all because they are so close to us. I hear this from my colleagues at work, and they don't even live near us, but the truth is, is that we have to start somewhere. And when we discussed this at our OSEC meeting last month, someone from the Sierra Club, local chapter, joined us and said that not, we are not alone in this. There are many communities along the Bay and in the North Bay also looking at dark skies ordinances. I believe we would be the first. But we had the choice to go as far as going for full dark skies compliance and took our citizens into account and decided that a pragmatic approach and doing something sooner would be a lot better. And so that's why we have so many timelines and, and compliance that takes cost and hardship into account and waivers. My older sister lives in Tucson, they're a dark skies city, and she said the only way their ordinance passed is they put a 20-year compliance timeline in for the billboards because the people who own the billboards said, weren't going to complain because they knew that within 20 years, they would have to replace all their hardware anyway. So they weren't looking at a unplanned cost, but that, that's how their, their ordinance got through, and that's why the city's 15-year compliance deadline gets through. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I will go, okay, I will go ahead and open it up for council discussion. I would like to see some more clarifications for me personally around entryway lighting. As mentioned, I think that that's the part of this ordinance that people are going to look at the most because that affects everyone. Most people have a light right in front of their door, lights in front of their garage, so I think that we need to tighten that up and just make things abundantly clear. I would like to see us move to an altered timeline, September 15th to January 31st for holiday lighting. It gets later and it gets darker later in September anyway, so I think the amount of time that light would really be on would be minimal, and I also think that generally Halloween lighting is more subdued than regular lighting. I just don't, I mean, I don't see like the sort of twinkle lights and that sort of thing giving off the same amount of lumens, you know, as other lights. So that's the same amount of time that we would have restrictions around holiday lighting. It just shifts it earlier in the year. And I'm glad that you came and commented about San Francisco because I read that comment a lot in, in the survey, and that's like with anything you do, right? There's always going to be a first city to regulate Airbnb or a first city to say, we only have reusable bags, and if you want a plastic bag, we're going to charge you. I mean, and there's like food waste, like to-go container ordinances. It all starts somewhere, and what we find a lot in the Bay Area is a city will implement something that's really impactful and other cities will take note, and they also will implement something. And so just because you have a neighbor who may be offensive, doesn't mean that you should throw your hands up and say, forget about it. We're also in a bowl, and we are rather isolated, and that is because of San Bruno Mountain, and I think that we have a duty to take care of this environment bestowed upon us. We aren't San Francisco. We have more wildlife, or we care a lot about our wildlife here, and being good stewards of the environment, I think, is a, is a major tenet of being from Brisbane, living in Brisbane, and having San Bruno Mountain in your backyard. So just because San Francisco is doing something doesn't mean that that should impact who we are and our identity and what we choose to do. And I hope that they will come along, and I do feel like San Francisco at times is very forward-thinking, so I wouldn't be surprised if they implement something like this. So I'm in favor of moving forward, but with some of those minor adjustments. And I'd like to open it up to other council members to weigh in as well. Councilmember Mackin, would you like to go first?
I actually have one question. Well, and Julia or John will have to answer this one. Do we not have one billboard within the city limits now that Erin brought up billboards? I think we have a permit that's a historic one.
Correct.
And will that require retrofitting of that billboard?
It's not exempt from the ordinance, so I would consider it subject to its requirements.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't hear your response.
Oh, sorry. I said, it's not exempt from the ordinance, so it would be subject to the retrofitting requirements for commercial.
I would echo a lot of what's already been said. Couple things I'll throw into the mix. I've read a bit about light and the effect, and we can talk about animals and migration and your circadian rhythms, but one other thing that maybe most people don't know is that if you're sleeping at night with a lot of light coming in your bedroom, it affects your heart health. And that's very serious, and they've done more studies on this. And so the light trespass from seemingly innocuous neighbors trying to be safe, and I want to try to pull back a little in not seeming like we're accusing people of being bad because they put up lighting and they were concerned about their safety. But I think the lighting industry has done a great job, I'm sure Mr. Berantin will affirm this, at trying to convince people that you need more light to be safe. And we've gone for decades with lighting that was much lower lumens, and that was safe. But of course, now you have to have the atomic beam that can be seen a mile away, and it costs you less energy, so everyone is just over-consuming. And I think the, the idea of glare and that demonstration, that one slide, really says a lot. But I'll throw in the last part, which is, we are the city of stars. And every night before I go to bed, I go look out the window, and I've only been able to see about two stars every night, and I used to be able to see 10, 20 constellations. And that's been in the last five years only. That's how fast we have gone to glare. And there are some houses up on the hill that have lighting. I wish I could identify who they are because they shine right into the front of our house. It's like having someone with their car headlights pointed right in front of our house. It's that bright.
I have that, too.
It's amazing how strong some of those lights are. So I think reasonableness, I think actually, cutting back, we'll be surprised at how much we can actually see again, because the glare, it makes it really hard to see. And, and this is about being good neighbors, and the commercial properties, you know, they've bought into it, too. They've got a lot of really bright lighting, so we're not trying to pick on commercial properties. But I think when they say, okay, go install new lights on the exterior, they're not thinking about downward-facing lights, they're just putting fixtures up. And it's, it's going to be a lot of education, but I think in the long run, people will be very satisfied with this. Thank you.
Councilmember Lentz?
I think the ordinance is great, and we should move forward with it.
I want to thank everybody who's worked so hard on this, and I've heard a lot about it over many, many years. And, you know, I, too, look out my front windows, which is my bedroom and my living room, and I see hillside homes that, you know, it, it's just amazing how bright and how big, you know, some of the apartment buildings on the other side of the hillside will have their entire garage space lit up like it's Christmas. And it's not. And, and I can see where lower lighting and shielded lighting would make a tremendous difference. I'm certainly in favor of this ordinance, and I look forward to seeing that, you know, whatever development goes on out at the Baylands, that in their planned development, you know, these guidelines and more are applied to that development also as it moves forward. One thing I have a concern about with the lights coming from ecology and those operations, you know, the light turning off supposedly is, you know, at close of business, and I think a lot of those businesses are run 24/7. And so I think encouraging them to be good neighbors and encouraging them to be quicker on the compliance with downturned lights and that kind of thing, and not spilling out onto other people's properties, I think is very important, and that we really need to also put this out with a positive spin, so to speak, in our luminary and our, and our, not necessarily luminary, but in the star and through public channels so that people know where the benefits. And I do think that the one picture where if you're shielding the light, you can actually see the danger, stranger danger, is, is pretty compelling when you know that that's what you're seeing. So, you know, I'm more, I'm all in favor of it, the little tweaks that the other council members would like to see, or clarifications, I think, are great, and I think we've brought as many what-ifs and contingencies into this to make it palatable for most.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, can I get a first and a second to introduce the dark sky ordinance, adding Chapter 15.88 Outdoor Lighting Standards to the Brisbane Municipal Code?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. Okay.
Applause goes to you.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Item G, Consider Adoption of Resolution to Adopt an Affordable Housing Strategic Plan. And we will start with our staff report from Chris Blackney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll actually be giving the presentation tonight, and Chris is available remotely for questions afterward.
Great.
So, wait for my slides to go up. Okay, great. All right, so again, good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay? Is my volume good?
We can hear you.
So the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan is a decision-making framework for the city to use to decide how to invest funds in affordable housing programs to meet the goals we set in our housing element. Those goals established in the housing element are reiterated as pillars in the strategic plan, and they include increased production of affordable housing, preserve the existing affordable housing stock, provide access to affordable housing for people with special needs, leverage private and external investment, and increase the city's implementation capacity. The timeframe of the strategic plan is tied to the eight-year regional housing needs allocation cycle in the housing element, which runs this year through 2031. The strategic plan is a living document, however, it can be adjusted at any time to reflect changes in city priorities or broader economic shifts or trends in affordable housing. I want to emphasize, the strategic plan is not a budget appropriation. It doesn't commit the city to fund any specific affordable housing programs or projects. Any direct funding of a program or project would require separate budget authorization by council. The strategic plan was prepared by consultants at Echo Northwest, as noted, and guided by the Affordable Housing Subcommittee of Mayor Davis and Councilmember Lentz. A comprehensive project timeline was provided as Attachment 3 to the staff report. Next slide, please. So in order to invest in affordable housing, we need to have revenue. As you are all aware, about 10 years ago, we lost our only significant source of affordable housing funding when redevelopment agencies were dissolved by the state. The city did establish a housing authority, and we've maintained an affordable housing fund since. That's been funded primarily through sales of former RDA properties. We have no current ongoing mechanism to collect revenue for that fund. So Section 3 of the strategic plan provides a library of internal and external revenue sources the city could pursue for both ongoing revenue streams to feed our fund over time as well as project-based funding opportunities. The strategic plan evaluates each internal funding source on a variety of factors, including ease of implementation, political palatability, risk, and flexibility. This will help the city to consider all upsides and downsides of a particular internal revenue source. Next slide, please. Section 4 of the strategic plan establishes 22 strategies and associated implementing actions under each strategy. These strategies are summarized in a table at the end of the section that also identifies responsible departments, a timeframe, administrative impact, and financial impact for implementation for each action. Next slide, please. Those strategies are all listed here for reference. As you can see, they range from pursuing ongoing revenue streams, including adoption of new fees on commercial development, to investment in tenant and homeowner assistance programs to prevent displacement of low-income residents. All strategies and actions are consistent with the housing element that was adopted this year, and relevant housing element policies are listed next to strategies where applicable. Next slide, please. So that concludes our fairly brief overview of the strategic plan. I'll close now for questions, and again, our consultant, Chris Blackney of Echo Northwest, is available as well for questions. Thank you.
I know Councilmember Mackin has lots of questions, so we will start with you.
You sure you want me to go first?
No, I'll have Cliff go first then.
Okay.
Well, I think you should go first, Colin, because, you know, you and I, Madison, we're on the committee.
Yeah, you're right. Cliff, we shouldn't have any questions.
You know, we've had tons of questions in our subcommittee meetings.
Yeah, so go, take a stab at it.
All right. I'll be as brief as I can. Could you please define for me what naturally affordable housing is?
Chris, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I'm happy to take that. So naturally, occurring affordable housing is housing that is not deed restricted. So oftentimes, when we talk about affordable housing, there's a covenant in place on property that requires it to be rented or sold at a price point that's affordable to a certain income threshold. Naturally, affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing, or as we call it, NOAA, is our- is our properties where the rent or sale price is below that threshold at the market rate. This is usually because the property may have some deferred maintenance. It's not like a brand-new property. It's an older property. It may be have some vocational characteristics. But at any rate, the, it's, it's generally where, where there are, the, the rent levels are affordable to people at income thresholds, at affordable, uh, uh, income thresholds. And we did a survey of NOAA properties in Brisbane. And there was some measurable units. I don't have the number off the top of my head. And so that's one of the reasons why it was made into a preservation or what made its way into the strategic plan was to, to, to try to protect those units from, from going away and not being naturally affordable any longer.
Okay. And mentioned is evaluate employer-assisted housing programs to mitigate, mitigate displacement of Brisbane residents as a result of employment growth. What, what are you talking about employer-assisted housing programs? I've not heard of such a thing. And how would that work?
Yeah, so EHA programs or EH programs, excuse me, are generally voluntary programs. So especially in markets like Brisbane where you have a concentration of employment that is generally geared toward higher wage employees, that creates price pressure in your housing market. And oftentimes, there are programs that are placed, the, the one that we referenced as a memo that we had circulated to staff, Santa Barbara is a really great example, where you enter into agreements with large employers because it's kind of a mutually beneficial situation. Because when you get into these conditions where housing costs are measurably high in relation to incomes, employers have a hard time recruiting employees because employees can't find housing right near, 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 near their place of employment. And so these voluntary programs are often successful in getting the employers to commit resources either on the supply side or the demand side to help their employees find housing in the community or to help build up supply in the community of which the broader spectrum of residents can, 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 can benefit from. So this program, which is program C4 in the strategic plan, commits the city to doing some further research on a program like this to identify the range of employers in the community that might benefit from such a program and do some outreach and develop some guidelines around how such a program could come to fruition, not just locally, but, but, but regionally. Because we know that the concentration of these types of employers that may benefit from, from, from a program like this is not just isolated to Brisbane, it's throughout the, the Bay Area.
So I, I still have a little bit of a hard time understanding how this would work because we've seen displacement of Brisbane renters over the last 10 years significantly. And other than an employer actually building housing or I've heard of some where they have a dormitory setting and they, they actually rent to their employees. Are, are you suggesting that, that we promote this? I, I mean, I just, I don't, I don't see the connection directly to someone who might be displaced because it's market-driven. And if there are increasing number of employees who are more affluent, working in our business or tech sector or biotech, and they want to live close to where they work, that's usually what happens.
Yeah, so, so the coastal housing partnership in Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties is a pretty good model. So this is a model where over 60 private and public sector employers have opted into a voluntary employer-assisted housing program. They pay annual dues that range, depending on their, their firm's employee count, from as low as $850 to as high as $14,000 per employee. And so what this does is it creates a fund from which the partnership can offer benefits. So this could, could be offering down payment assistance for people. It could be rent, rent buy downs and so rent subsidies. And so one of the, the major impacts of this program in the research that we had documented was over 13,000 employees have been able to purchase homes through this network and program. And there were over 175 households that were receiving rental assistance benefits. So it's a pretty good model. It's one that we've, we've used as kind of a case study to, 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 to model some of the actions around, for this program. But this program isn't committing to actually implementing this. It's to study the, the appropriateness for it, for the community of Brisbane.
Okay, and I understand rent subsidies, but that also just gives someone more money to displace someone because they have more money to afford. So that maybe needs more work. There was a lot of discussion in here about in lieu fees. And it was also mentioned very clearly, you, you stated that there was a lack of vacant land as being a challenge for Brisbane. And I just wondered if in lieu fees are going to be a productive means of generating affordable housing in that if you don't have the land, what are you going to do with those fees?
Yeah, so, so in the context, which I think you're, you're, you're referencing in the context of a, your inclusionary housing ordinance, it is now state law for you to offer one, at least one alternative means of, of meeting an inclusionary requirement. And so if you have a certain set aside, a real estate developer has the opportunity to either meet that requirement through providing affordable housing units. And you are legally required to provide some alternative, the most common of which is a in lieu fee. And so that's why in lieu fees show up in our analysis because it's generally a, a best practice of providing a legally mandated alternative. In the event that you have an environment where developers choose an in lieu fee over providing inclusionary units, that provides a very flexible resource for the city to then implement some of the programs that are referenced in the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan, ranging from providing, again, rental subsidies, tenant protections, or direct subsidy of affordable housing units in, in partnership with the housing authority. You could be doing things like doing land purchase and assemblage. So we've identified some of the actions that, 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 that could be beneficial from a, such, such a fund in, in conjunction with other resources that are identified in the strategic plan.
Well, I, I just, I always question in lieu fees because if we don't start pushing more for the developers to actually build affordable, some portion, they'll always opt for in lieu fees. They want market rate units. So there needs to be a greater push to make them actually build those, those units. And I know this came up in Redwood City and they started just doing very hard negotiation with developers and saying, you need to actually build those units. So that's a rhetorical comment on my part. There was mention in here of a business tax having to do with housing. And is that then those, those fees collected are only for housing? Is that a housing fund? Would that go in the, the housing fund earmarked funds?
Yeah, so I, I might, I might ask Julia to elaborate on what the potential use of such a fund would be. But again, this is a program that is designed to study the feasibility of a special purpose business tax. And so the reason for this program is that oftentimes these fees, taxes, levies, whatever you want to call them, are placed on real estate development. So that is at the, the, when the shovel's coming out of the ground, but not necessarily on the businesses that locate inside those properties, right? And so the idea behind this program, because one of the problems is when you start to layer a fee upon a fee upon a fee, it starts to make real estate development unfeasible. And that becomes an economic development challenge because now you are not creating growth in your economy. And so this program is really more along the lines of there's a user, there's a company, there's a firm that is creating a need, not a space that's creating a need. And so is there a way to get some value capture out of the presence of that firm to help support the need that that firm or, or business is, is, is creating? And again, this is a, a, a program that's intended to study the feasibility, the feasibility of that. Like any mechanism, when you're implementing a fee or an exaction, there is the risk of, of adverse impacts and downside risks. And so the idea behind this is to study that and create that nexus and to explore if it's something that's appropriate and feasible for the city of Brisbane.
So a commercial linkage fee is also related to the impact.
It is.
You're talking about a business tax for the tenants who occupy the building.
And a commercial linkage fee is on space. And so that's the difference is that there is a, there's a fee. So if you're talking about a commercial linkage fee, it's a, a, call it a 100,000 square foot office building or life sciences building. That creates some demand for a range of worker types. We can draw a nexus between that and affordable housing need. There's a fee that's paid at the development level. What this fee is discussing is now when there's a tenant that comes into that space that is not absorbing the cost directly. I mean, you could argue that it's indirectly being absorbed through higher lease rates, but is not being directly exacted on, uh, uh, for, for, for the, the, the need that it's creating. This is a mechanism to, to, to address that piece.
And does that have to be proven by a, a nexus study? Because different businesses may not have a lot of employees.
Yeah, so, so the, the study would, would set thresholds for business type, size, things like that. But I think that's a, that's a question that I would either defer to staff or the city attorney on and whether or not it's a required nexus to, legally required nexus to, uh, uh, exact such a fee.
Did you want, are, are you going to address that? No. No, okay, I'll, I'll move on. Also mentioned here, affordable housing impact fees. So if someone did a market rate residential development and you had affordable housing impact fees and they only wanted to do market rate development, would you in fact be doing in lieu fees and impact fees on that development if it was market rate?
Yeah, we, we talked about this in the study. They don't generally go together. So oftentimes, best practice is for an inclusionary housing ordinance, you set a minimum, a, a, a project threshold or actually a, a minimum project threshold. So oftentimes, IHOs are really, really, really burdensome on smaller projects, right? So if you think about the marginal impact of, you know, a, a 15% certified, set aside on a 100, 100-unit project versus a five-unit project, right? That's very different, right? So oftentimes, communities choose one or the other. They have a, one or the other or both. But I'll get to the both in a moment. So you either have an affordable housing impact fee on market rate development, you do your nexus study, you have a fee associated with market rate development. Or you have an IHO where you are trying to encourage development of affordable units in mixed-income properties or giving a developer their legally obligated option for an alternative, which is most commonly a fee. But where the two work together is when you set this threshold of a project size where you're trying to get some value capture out of the small project still without putting an, like, an excessive burden on them that the IHO would, would, would be having. And so assume just randomly that you set your IHO at a 10 units and higher. So your IHO applies to all projects that are 10 units or higher. Oftentimes, a community will establish a affordable housing impact fee for small projects that's smaller than the in lieu fee so that it doesn't create that undue burden. But then it's still not letting all those market rate projects kind of slip under the radar and not pay any sort of, of, of exaction at all.
Okay, so you establish thresholds, in other words?
Yes, yes.
Okay. There's a chart in here, figure three, that's called revenue generating stream analysis. And on the top two lines, the funding source, first one is commercial linkage fee, second one, housing impact fee. Over to the far right, it says adverse impact risk. And under those two, both the commercial linkage and housing impact, it, it says risk is high. Could you elaborate on why?
Yeah, um, and so this, I'm just making sure. I'm, I'm scrolling through to make sure I'm referencing. So you're referencing figure?
Page 13?
Yep, yep, okay. So this references the risk that that fees have on adversely impacting development feasibility. And so when you impose a, an IHO, an impact fee, a commercial linkage fee, there's a risk that if not appropriately calibrated, that fee might result in either what we call flight of capital and development not happening that otherwise would have happened and happens not happening in the first place, right? And so I would commend the city because they're currently doing a commercial nexus study and feasibility study alongside that. And so, and that's important to do the feasibility study so that you understand the, basically how far you could push that envelope without breaking the model of development. And so when you're, anytime you're doing value capture, you want to make sure that you're not pushing it all the way to the edge that you're going to end up with unintended consequence. And this happens with inclusionary housing all the time, where a city might impose a set aside or a depth of affordability level that is so high that it then precludes development from being feasible and happening in the first place. And the state has actually acknowledged this as a potential constraint. And it's, HCD has a legal authority when you push that envelope to a certain level to require you to do a feasibility study to show that you're not putting an undue burden on development.
Gotcha, okay. And this is a, a strategic plan. So I, I'd like a sense either from our staff or from you. If this is accepted and we adopt it, a lot of the particulars have not been resolved. Is this just giving us a toolkit of things we can do? Or are we actually adopting all of the avenues available to us that are mentioned in here as mechanisms we would use going forward? Because then we've, we've put our mark on it and made the statement, this is what we're going to do. Or do we get to pick and choose? That's a very important distinction. Because some people will monitor this and they're going to hold us to it.
Yeah, we would consider it a toolkit. It's a framework. It presents basically every avenue we could pursue when it comes to, for example, revenue sources, like, which I think we're thinking about. So yes, that's exactly how we would think of it.
Okay, I, I think it would have been helpful or maybe it could be considered adding that somehow in some sort of a language that these are considerations that can be utilized by the city going forward as appropriate? You can craft your own language on that?
In section four?
Wherever you, you see fit. And, and one of the concerns I have with this is when we talk about a business tax for affordable housing, we may also want to consider a business tax for a general fund. Are we going to have two taxes? And so these are, these are things that the council with staff, we're going to have to sort out. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Oh, one of my favorite subjects. So one of the first attachments we have is the Balance Brisbane. Pie chart, um, attachment six, uh, attachment six, attachment one. I'm not sure which, it's page 152 or page one. And are these areas that were just picked from, uh, the residence survey that we did on? If, if you were doing this, where would you plop down affordable housing?
Yeah, so that attachment is the March third, 2022, um, City Council Agenda Report. That was a, both an update on the strategic plan and an update on the housing element. And the Balance Brisbane exercise was the, um, I think what you're thinking of.
So these, these, this attachment is not going into the, what we're doing now?
No, um, no, not the Balance Brisbane results. The, they are appended to the housing element since it was a housing element exercise.
Yes, yes, the housing element, but not into this exercise at all. Because I will say that I've got definite concerns about these being housing sites, especially for low income housing. I'm going to wait and hear everyone else's questions on this because, um, I'd like to hear what the subcommittee, how they came up with some of their rationalizations here.
Okay, well, I'll open it up to public comment then, provided, wait, do you have, do you have questions?
I, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can have discussion.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a comment at this time? Going once, going twice.
I see no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to council discussion. You want to jump into it?
No, not really. I, I, I would rather, I'd rather hear.
Well, I mean, it's a big document, so to me it's like, I don't know what you're, what you want to hear about from me, from us. Specifically like what rationale, you know, it's huge, so.
It is huge.
You know, I actually do have a question, Madison, so, um, and then maybe that might lead into the discussion.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, under the, uh, commercial nexus fee applica, uh, applica, applicable to certain new commercial development, and that's in progress. So, um, when will that come before the council? And if you can kind of share a little bit about, like, what you think you might present to us for, uh, consideration?
Well, the, the feasibility study is still in progress. So, um, I would say first quarter of 2024, we would have a finished nexus study with feasibility study for you guys to review. Um, when it comes to the information we'd provide, I think at that time you get a full-on technical overview of the justification of the nexus, um, as well as, like Chris mentioned, the feasibility. What is the impact, the cost of development? What is the kind of sweet spot, um, to impose a fee that does not chill development versus, um, being able to actually collect funds? So if there's anything else, Chris, you think is relevant in terms of what we'll present? Go ahead and.
No, I mean, yeah, so, I mean, the, 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 I would, I would also reiterate that this, this is an update to previous analysis that has been, have been done. And so, um, you know, especially given the real estate dynamics of your market, like the nexus is pretty clear. Right? And so it's really a function of feasibility at this point. And so the work that we're doing now, as Julia mentioned, should be coming down the pipeline in the next month, month and a half. Um, will show a range of thresholds of which what our analysis has determined on a range of, of commercial types. So we looked at, um, uh, industrial, we looked at life sciences, we looked at office, we looked at hospitality of what a, um, a fee could be associated with those development forms based on a series of prototypical development typologies that could be exacted without, like I said before, breaking the model without, without, without making, uh, having, uh, um, as, as we reference in that figure three, having that adverse impact risk, so.
Got it. And, and, and when, and when you talk about like not breaking the model, you know, as looking at what other cities have done that have similar types of commercial development and then kind of applying something similar. And then.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah, so we do a case study analysis to kind of put yourself in the, in the, the range of, um, of other fees that are exacted in, in your peer communities. Um, and then we do what's called a pro forma analysis. It's a real estate model, um, to show what fee could be, basically you're, we're solving backwards for the fee that could be exacted, that still doesn't, that doesn't have a adverse impact on land prices or a developer's ability to attract equity and capital to a project. Because if they can't attract equity and capital to a project based on a threshold rate of return, then that development doesn't happen. And that's one of the reasons that we look at peer communities because I mentioned the, the, the term earlier, flight of capital. Um, you know, real estate competes for capital in a competitive market like any other asset. And if you cannot attract an appropriate return, uh, that balances out the risk for that asset, then that capital goes to something else. It might go to a different geography, it might go to a different asset class. And so we take, we generally take those things as fixed. And so then we back into the fee that, that doesn't have the, uh, the adverse impact. And in some cases, for some uses, it might be zero. We might come back and say, you cannot charge a fee on industrial, any fee will break industrial. But we might come back and say hotel can pay a small fee. Like, 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 those are just examples. I don't have, I haven't financed yet, but, um, and it, it will range by asset class, so.
Oh, okay. And then, um, are, are there any, like, time limitations for receiving funds from a nexus fee? You know, that you have to spend it on affordable housing or you, I don't have to give the money back or what? I mean, are there restrictions?
Yeah, there are. Um, I, I, I can't elaborate on them right now, but you, you, you debt, because it's a nexus to a certain use, you have to use them on affor, affordable housing re, projects effectively, so to, uh, on the production of affordable house.
Okay, uh, all right, thanks.
Madam Mayor, if I may? So one of the things when Terry says she wanted to hear from the subcommittee, so do I. One of the things that jumped out at me, and maybe this will help. There's a, a section called suitability for Brisbane. It says lackluster.
Page, page.
Page is number nine or eighty-two. Document page nine, staff report eighty-two. And it says, lackluster development activity in Brisbane more likely to be a function of limited developable, developable land in central Brisbane. Talking about alternative to providing inclusionary units, onsite good policy, blah, blah, blah. Then you go down, it says, we would not consider the revenue generating capacity of in lieu fees to be significant. And that jumped out at me because I said, okay, so we're looking at in lieu fees, but we're not going to get much money. So what are we accomplishing? But then there's another sentence at the end of that same paragraph that really popped out. And I think it's, it's worthy, uh, I'd like to know if you went over this and, and what your discussion was. Because it says, if delivery of units in central Brisbane is preferred over control of funding resources, then the city should provide incentives to ensure that it is financially feasible for developers to deliver new residential projects with onsite affordable housing units. And knowing that a lot of the cities in San Mateo County, when they, we see all these housing projects here and there, those cities in a lot of cases donated city land. We don't have large parcels of city land to donate to a developer to say, come on in here and do this. And through these in lieu fees, we're not, it says, we're not going to have likely significant amount of money. So in combination with an impact fee or in combination, maybe with a, a tax, we could build up a fund, but when you asked, uh, Councilmember Lentz about even timelines, it starts making me think this is way out there before you get enough money to do something. So again, if delivery of units is preferred over control of funding, have we looked at trying to incentivize actually having these built?
So, you, you know, like the document is, is it, is about establishing goals, right? And, and, and so, um, as Julia had mentioned, you know, these are like tools in the toolbox. And so, you know, land is important, money is important, uh, political will is important. And so, um, yeah, you know, we, we talked about the, you know, the, the lack of land. We, we own a couple of parcels. So in order to increase.
At this moment?
Uh, well, yeah, for sure, right? I mean, you know, so, but you know, one of, one of the ways, right? Isn't like, it, this is, it's all the eggs are in one basket. You know, um, one of the ways to incentivize housing in central Brisbane and that, that was, I would say, like, one of the, the big, um, you know, goals for us as a subcommittee was to, um, and I know Madison, you can, you know, really dive into this in a much more meaningful way because, you know, you're, you're trying to get housing for, for yourself, right? And for your peers that are your age. But, you know, building housing in central Brisbane is, is a goal. And it'll, will require us to have, uh, discussions, uh, in, in, in a deeper way. You know, looking at the industrial park is, are there areas of industrial park that we might consider, you know, having greater density than what we currently have, you know, towards in the center of town? Right? That's a discussion. Doesn't mean that it'll happen, but we should have the discussion. And having money to be able to, um, you know, perhaps partner, you know, we've, we've talked about, you know, partnering with, with other property owners in town. That could be a possibility too. It, it, it's really giving us, you know, kind of a, uh, I think you, you, you said it, you know, like, hey, we're, we're, we're doing this because affordable housing is important to us. Right? We're, we're making a statement. And, and if you want to partner with us, it could be, you know, a private, uh, property owner. It could be an affordable housing developer. We're here to, you know, to work together. And, and of course, also working with our community to see what is appropriate. Because we know that not all sites are appropriate for, uh, high density housing, which quite frankly will have to happen if it's going to be affordable. I think, I think we need to, to be honest about that, that, you know, in order for it to pencil out, there has to be, you know, a, a willingness to have some density.
Well, it, it just, it seems like the city can take the lead, but the partnership, because we're not developers, we don't have the money to be developers, we don't own a lot of property. The partners in this are really the businesses that bring the employees in because that creates the jobs, housing imbalance.
Right.
And that's what it goes back to. So they need to be as big a partner with us, but we need to be the leadership behind it to say, you have an obligation now. You, you've come to Brisbane, you're bringing the employees, you have an obligation now to partner with us on this. And it's a different change of, of looking at things.
Uh, anything that you see highlighted in this document outside of your highlights? Um, okay, might be hard to decipher at this point, but those are things that Cliff and I, um, added in after we saw the first draft, and it speaks directly to that. Um, it's really, there's a framework, a lot of frameworks around getting fees from developers. But what's not as common is money from employers. And employers really, as you said, they derive a lot of this imbalance because if it's biotech, for example, right? We had that Bristol Myers Squibb, um, ribbon cutting. And I, the average salary is something like 200,000 in biotech. Um, and so we are having a lot of biotech expansion. We have Freemont coming in, which is 800 employees. And that's just one of the companies that's going to be at phase three. And I said this when I met with, uh, Assembly Member Mullin, um, the other day. And Cliff was there, um, at Madhouse. I mean, Congress, Congressman Mullin. And, um, I, I, I just said that, like, there needs to be more of a framework here to hold employees accountable because employ, or employers accountable because employees will come and they, you know, they're on their lunch break and they take a hike or they walk our trails or they visit our restaurants and they see like how beautiful of a neighborhood we have here and they want to move here, who wouldn't? And it may be a tinge more affordable than where they've been commuting from Palo Alto or San Jose, Menlo Park. Um, and so those people enter the housing market and if they can't afford to buy, they can certainly afford to rent. And that displaces somebody like me who I view as having a very valuable job. But in no shape or form with what I'm doing, am I going to pull in $200,000 a year? Um, does that mean that I should seek other employment? No, I, I think, and, and that's the same for so many people, all the way down to service workers, right? There's so many different jobs that are critical to our economy and our, and our society. And so we have to acknowledge how these employers who bring in these high paying jobs that everyone loves and is excited about, what the consequences of that is. And as you mentioned, they're the reason for the jobs, housing imbalance. Um, I think Mullin was saying like, in San Mateo County, we went from eighteen to one and now we're down to twelve to one for jobs available for every one unit, which is absurd. So that's why we've added in this section. And, um, that's something that I'm hoping like could apply at the Baylands as we're building out or, you know, within places in Crocker Park. And we haven't explored it too deeply, but just put it as like a priority of something that we could look into, but a way to assess some type of tax, whether it be not necessarily on the amount of employees, because they may have a lot of employees, but those employees might not be making a ton per hour and they may not be influencing the rental market or the housing market the way that, you know, a company of 50 employees who are all making six figures do. Um, so looking possibly at maybe how much they're doing in payroll or, or how much they're doing in annual revenue. We'd have to assess a bunch of different factors, but, um, those employers need to take responsibility for their piece in this ecosystem. And what happens is they come in, we always want to attract jobs and that's fine and dandy. But then the burden really falls on us as a body of five to now fix this problem that we didn't really create. We're, we're not developers and we're not employers. And those, these things, these puzzle pieces aren't meshing. So what can we implement to help move the needle? Um, and if they may not be in a position, like we discussed workforce housing extensively, Councilmember Lentz and I, and that may be something that's too big of a deterrent where they're like, we're not housing developers, we, like, we can't figure that out. And then the housing is like only open to their employees who may not necessarily need it, especially if they're making all this, their employees are making all this money. So if they could pay into a fund that the city could manage, then let's say we really want to get serious about Parkside. Well, how are we going to bring Prologis to the table? How are we going to bring some of these companies to the table? It's going to be because we have more than $4 million in our affordable housing fund. And that's like, if we want to control and influence affordable housing in our community, then we need to find a way to increase that fund so we have money that actually can, can do something. Or we say, hey, you know, to us, creating new, new units, we don't see it being feasible within the realm of, you know, our influence and the money that we have. So instead, we're going to use the money that we take in to then. So instead, we're going to use the money that we take in to then do rent subsidies or to do, you know, silent seconds, you know, mortgage, first-time home buyer programs. That's a priority that we will have to establish. But the big thing missing is means to generate revenue. And in lieu funds, it's not just, or in lieu fees is not the only thing. And it, you know, we're in this position partially because like RDA, right? Used to, we used to have funds that were able, we were able to spend and that's how we've done so many projects. And since that's gone away, we've not been able to accomplish a lot. So Cliff and I were really trying to look at exploring all the different opportunities of ways that we could pull in money. And to me, this is simply a list of strategies that are identified to say, okay, you know, we want to make Parkside happen. Let's go into this and see which of these, which of these strategies are going to lead us to that result. And this is used as a blueprint, as a framework. If we have a project or something we want to accomplish, we can come here and everything's in one place. It's really helpful for staff because they don't have to spend all this time doing all this research of different funds and different strategies. It's here for them. They can access it and then say, based on all the research we've already done, this is what we suggest. So that's how I view this document and why it's written the way it is. I don't know if there's anything else that you-
I think you summed it up really well, so, yeah.
As a framework, I think it's good to have this. And, you know, we haven't got the Nexus studies, so we don't know what may work in what size project or what type of businesses. I do think that we need to find a way to have businesses that don't have actual sales and aren't producing income to contribute to a plethora of issues that are facing this city. You know, it's not just affordable housing. It's not just parks, it's not just infrastructure. It's, you know, the broad swath of services the city needs to provide to businesses and residents. I think that the strategy of, personally, the strategy that employers would subsidize home purchase or rentals for their employees only raises the problem of what someone else in the community can pay in rent or is forced to pay in rent. Because it just says, well, you know, we can just knock 2,000 or 4,000 off our rent for the month. And so it makes, there's no incentive to the landlord or the developer to build a cheaper property or have a lower rent property on the market because they're going to still get the money they want out of their property. And so, you know, it sort of disincentivizes everyone playing fair in the market. And, you know, I'm also torn in a way that, you know, we can't artificially keep our home prices because that's the biggest investment that our citizens have is to be able to own a home that appreciates. And that's the most investment that most people will have upon their retirement is what their home value is. It's the only way us Americans have learned to save, for the most part, is through, you know, having a home. And that's where most of our wealth and, you know, you can call it paper wealth or whatever, but, you know, until you have to do something with it and tap into that resource, that's the only wealth that our citizens, most citizens in the US have is their value of their home and their property. So I think as a framework, this is a good starting place. It will be interesting to see how the Nexus studies shake out.
That'll tell us a lot.
And, you know, how, as long as it takes us to keep accumulating to get enough money to do anything with, the cost of those projects is probably going to go up tremendously also. So, you know, we may be chasing this ball down the road for a long, long time. And I wish that we had a better way to go about it, but I think that's the reality here.
Madam Mayor, can I just add to what she said? What you're saying, Terry, is increasingly important because what I've read recently with construction costs and labor and materials and everything, a lot of the projects that have been approved in the peninsula are not being built. And so different cities are saying, what's going on, Mr. Developer? Where's our project? Because it's got all this affordable housing. And they go, we can't pencil it out right now because everything's so expensive. So the difficulty is the stuff you want to be built is not getting built yet. They're holding back. And so, but I do think, I agree with you, this is, it has to start somewhere. And the money, like you said, it could be a matter of chasing this. You get money in, but everything goes up, but you've got to start somewhere.
I think part of it, right, is the pressure that the state is applying on us.
Sure.
And that, we could be here for another six hours talking about that. But we are trying to take what we know is a problem, right? But then this immense amount of pressure that the state is applying to us and trying to navigate through how we are going to just double or triple the size of our town in a decade or two. And, you know, I think that a lot of San Mateo County cities would, are questioning the feasibility of that. And yeah, I mean, we're going to, we're seeing the effects of that now. Where, you know, who knows, the Baylands may never be built too, right? Because they may just not, it may not be financially feasible. And then at some point, the state's going to have to evaluate and say, hmm, are the, are these Rena numbers, are these, is this pressure that we're applying? Are we applying in the correct ways? Because so far, maybe it's not yielding the results that we want. Part of this is trying to take this challenge that we've been given, albeit maybe unfair, and try our best to figure out how we're going to come up with solutions to what we've been charged to do for the employer-assisted housing that you mentioned. Those kind of strategies, like, kind of make my skin crawl that you mentioned because I'm like, this is, that's just making this worse. But again, we're just here to identifying what's out there in the market. There might be strategies in here that you're like, oh, absolutely no to that. That's okay for us to say that. We're just having a document that's comprehensive. But more of what Cliff and I were getting at is employers paying into a fund that we manage, that we can say, okay, what's the best use of this money to generate affordable housing in our community? And that might be, you know, through subsidies for existing residents, for, you know, mortgage assistance, or it may be actually building something. But if we have a fund that we manage, we know what's going to be the most feasible outcome that can impact residents who have already been here as opposed to residents coming in because their jobs have now located here. And they are, you know, they're contributing to this displacement phenomenon. So I'm with you. I mean, I rent. It sucks. It sucks. And I know many friends that are just buying their first homes and they are terrified. They don't know how they're going to make the numbers pencil out with interest rates as they are. I don't have all the solutions, but I do feel like our document is really comprehensive. And I would like to see staff maybe make it a little bit more clear in the strategy section that that's what this is and that the council is not beholden to pursuing any or all of these strategies, but this is merely a comprehensive list for which we can use at a future time and select whatever strategy we deem most appropriate. And it's a living document, so there's going to be amendments to this in the future based on, you know, what the current conditions call for. So with that clarification, I would like to, you know, move forward with this. And, but I would, I'm open to, you know, anyone else's opinion.
I would like to thank the subcommittee for all the work you did and sharing your comments actually made it more clear on where you were coming from and the challenges that you dealt with. And this is going to be a balancing act because even accommodating more housing, the difficulty is if we don't have enough money in the general fund, as Councilmember O'Connell pointed out, you can't deliver city services. So we have to think both. And as Mr. Blakeney, and I don't know if I pronounced your name correctly, but Black, Blakeney, okay. As you also pointed out, there's a tipping point at which things don't get built if you're saddling people with too many taxes. So we're going to have to, it's going to be tough balancing act.
Yeah.
But thanks very much to the committee and staff for putting this together and Mr. Blakeney.
Do you want me to make a motion to adopt the resolution for Affordable Housing Strategic Plan?
If, I mean, if you feel comfortable doing that.
I will do that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye.
I meant, are you ready for me? Not, you want me to?
I was ready.
I thought you were.
So we'll move to item I, City Manager's Report on Upcoming Activities.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of items, just a reminder. And we're putting, we've been putting out information, we'll continue to do so, that the visitation paving program is going to be starting on Monday. That will be the section from Mendocino to San Benito. The contractor will be starting on Monday, the 20th with grinding and on Tuesday, the 21st with paving. Striping layout will occur the following week, Tuesday, the 28th, after Thanksgiving. And the upper portion will be striped on Thursday, the 30th. We are putting out no parking signs and we also are requesting commercial properties to get their garbage out before 8:00 AM because the trucks will have to come by and be off the streets by that time. Just a reminder that this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00, you can join community members, city staff and library staff for the Dewali Celebration at the Brisbane Library. There will be dancing, arts and crafts, and of course, food too. And that's it for this evening.
Thank you. Countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. I have a report to make. I got to find my notes here. Okay, here we go. I will do it because Councilmember Cunningham is not here. We interviewed three firms for the city's Public Art Master Plan. And we ended up, oh, so the three firms were Nine Dot Arts Designing Local and Gail M. Goldman Associates. Nine Dot Arts, they have done several projects. They did the Denver Airport. And they did, I think, two projects in Austin where they integrated art within a mixed-use plan. And they integrated that from the very beginning of the planning process. So kind of like what we've discussed, maybe envisioning art from the very beginning with the Baylands plan. That's kind of what this company already has experience doing so that art is not an afterthought, but an integral part of a development and maybe even intertwined with architecture or like parks that are planned around art, that sort of thing. We really connected with their team. And one of the, one of the people that we interviewed, they've just done so, they worked with so many cities in the Bay Area. We were actually drawn to Nine Dot Arts because they are not, like, we don't want to just look like every city. We don't want to have a master plan that's just a copy of South San Francisco. And I believe that they have offices in Seattle and Denver, Nine Dot Arts. And we talked a lot about curation as well. And they are, they can remain a partner with the city after the master plan is finished because they have all of the connections within the art world. They can actually advise us and help us pull in curators for certain projects or certain areas. They really focus on understanding what kind of art appeals to the community, which is really important from a public art perspective, public art committee perspective, because you want to select an artist that's going to align with the tastes, so to speak, or the culture of Brisbane. So they do a lot of outreach and work to kind of figure out what is the art identity in Brisbane along with certain areas that could, art could go. And, yeah, they're just, they're really just an incredible, incredible firm that I felt could really help us understand like what our vision is. And with each area, they'll identify the art typographies, as they called it, or typologies. And so like, they might say, along Crocker Trail, the art that's most suited here is murals or statues or benches, what have you. So that when the committee is looking at a site, they already know kind of what art would make the most sense. So I'm really excited about working with them. And it was a unanimous decision. We were drawn to them from the very beginning. They had a lot of technical difficulties, like 15 minutes of technical difficulties. And we thought for sure like that alone was going to do them in, but they came in just really excited and we resonated with them. So that's who we ended up choosing and I'd be happy to answer any questions about them or about the master plan process.
Could you give us an idea, since the entrance to town may completely change? How are you approaching that with them? Are they, are they going to be made aware? Because a master plan of identifying things, and if they do a site visit, the materials that we had in the staff report were really good. They seemed like a great choice. But it's difficult. There's things that could be done, maybe in the near future. But the entrance to town being one of the most important components of our city, that's like a blank slate and we don't even know what that's going to look like.
Yeah, that's something that we, our staff and us will obviously collaborate with them on. They're actually the only firm to reference Crocker Park and know that we had the ribbon cutting and know that we had discussed previously that art might go there. They referenced the Baylands, they referenced Sierra Point. They referenced projects that we have up and coming. So they were the firm that not only did we resonate with, but seemed to have the biggest, the best pulse on where we're going as far as development goes as a city. I think that their intention would be to do a site visit and to like walk and see everything physically for themselves. But we will let them know kind of all of the city-owned land and like what the future of that land could be so that they can build that into the plan. Because they also will identify, they'll identify sites within the plan and what could go there and maybe what like an appropriate timeline might be.
Because it was just, as I was reading it and I went, oh, but the most important is that entrance to town. And if they think of everything else as important and what exists, and then it's kind of later, which they say, well, they can be called back consulting for other stuff. But that's probably going to end up being one of the most important. Probably going to end up being one of the most important.
Yeah, um they're they're going to be aware, they're going to be aware of that, I mean, the committee is also aware, we've had. Several conversations about the entrance to town and wanting to do something there and also understanding that. You know, things might change and how much money do you invest in an area that could look completely different and. Um so that that, all those discussions will be part of the project, but they had interesting sort of outreach. They had outreach, interesting outreach ideas and they're planning to have like a lot of photos and examples so that. When they say like different mural types, they would have, you know, photos there of things that the community has said like. Oh, this feels like Brisbane, what style, so that sounds really helpful, because they think that that's something that like. That's something that the committee is struggling with, we have a implementation ordinance, which is great, but it's not infused with. The goals and aspirations of our community, it just tells us how do we apply the law. To our businesses and our developers and the committee itself, but not how do you get from there to. Incredible art and that's the, that's the function that they're going to fill. And from there, I think that the committee will have a foundation and a framework to then go out and. Create projects that we know align with Brisbane's vision for art and our identity, so. Did you have a question? Did you have a question? Okay, that's all it for me, does anyone else have a report? Okay. Rank uh rank communications?
Correspondence was received from Danny Ames on November fourteenth. Pushback on state housing mandates, fight to maintain local land use decisions.
And that segues us right into oral communications number two, and I think Barbara would like to comment maybe on that topic also.
Um so yeah, I I remember going up to Measure JJ and. You guys sitting up there saying things like. The state doesn't care whether it's right to build on the Baylands or not, it doesn't care. What your, what your constituents think, we have to do this. And if that isn't a call to you to join this lawsuit, I don't, I don't know what we're doing here. Because that is exactly what this lawsuit is working to address, the fact that that. You guys are no longer our representatives in the face of this legislation, we. We have some, I mean, we have some right to determine our own future and. And I will be sorely, sorely disappointed if we do not. You know, I don't know if it's material support or anecdotal support, you know, talking about what we went through as a city. Um whatever it is, but we, I think we have to be involved upon in this because we have had. Our identity hijacked more than any other city in the state of California. I mean, they're they're complaining about their Rena numbers. It's lightweight. Um so yeah, I'm up here to push you to do something and and I'm not telling you exactly what to do, but you have to do something. You really have to for your own, for everybody's, you know, sense of security in this community, thank you.
Thanks, and we have a hand raised from Roland.
Hello again, um my mayor and councilman, thank you for your service at this late hour. Now, with regard to the the comments made by my predecessor, predecessor, I think. I'm not familiar with the lawsuit, but I I believe if you want to tag along, the easiest way to do this. Is to pass something known as an amicus curiae, I'm sure you are certainly know uh uh what that is. I did want to talk um about the topic though, but in a different light. It's entitlement and this business that always doesn't pan- pencil out, yada, yada, yada. And and basically change the way we do business with these developers, because in San Jose, quite frankly, they just get their entitlement. They overnight the double or triple the value or whatever it is, uh property uh that they own. And then they they either, you know, sell um sell it off and move on, which is okay, but the worst case we just had just now. Is that um they got an entire developer got an entitlement from the city of San Jose. And then uh made the city of San Jose eminent domain them, and guess how they pay for all this, this region measured three funds. Uh at some point, this has to stop, so my recommendation to you when you face with that situation. Is to put in some kind of a timeline and say, look, you're going to be doing whatever it is, putting in the utilities, building the foundations. Uh do something by a certain date, and if you don't, well, your enti- uh your entitlement is basically gonna turn out. Um you will get a a notice of default and if if you carry on the same path, will you basically back to square one? You're gonna have to start all over again with something that uh uh pencil pencil out. Uh but that comment I'd like to make is um is a suggestion about your uh city management uh um recruiting efforts. Um I hope your recruiter is making a good progress, uh but if not, I personally have got a great city manager for you. And I'd be more than happy uh to help your recruiter, um if you give her my contact information. Thank you and good night.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I will adjourn the meeting at ten oh two PM.
Should we be announcing that we're going back into our workshop?
That's a, that's, yeah. We are going to be continuing our workshop from earlier this evening because we ran out of time.
In the large conference room.
In the large conference room.